Okay, 3:30 and I guess we need to call our work session to order and get started. I just wrote a letter today to our chamber. I commend the excellent work that was done preparing and carrying out our first actual festival. I'm real proud of the outcome and I thought the spirit of the festival was real good. Folks that came to Hamilton enjoyed some great food and good fellowship and had some vendors that had some very nice things to sell and felt like the people were in the right frame of mind to do some shopping. Had some vendors tell me that they've done real well and plan to be back with us next year, so that's good news. One of our main thrusts in our workshop today is to review our 2019 budget. Have Mr. Allen Council here today. This thing is a kind of look at it, it looks great today. Real thankful that we've got Allen on board with us. Allen, we're gonna give you the floor and let you cover the areas that we need to discuss today.
That's an handout, Steve.
You too. Two to stay.
Can I get them two?
Oh.
Is there an extra one? If not, it's fine.
That's fine, David. I think it's hooked up.
He's just gonna push that button. Push that button down, but clear one.
There we go.
You can adjust your volume.
Okay. We've got two handouts, handouts for you. At the top of one of them is September 30th, 2018. And on top of the other one is September 30th, 2019. So the September 30th, 2018 is the final unaudited numbers of the year will just finish. 2019 is our working copy of our budget for the, for the work sessions, what we're gonna start with to put together our, our budget for the year ended September 30th, 2019. If you look at the 2018, there's five columns across the page and the columns we're gonna look at is the third column, which is year-to-date actual, and the fourth column is year-to-date budget. So we, we budgeted total revenues, six thousand nine million seven hundred, six million nine hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. And we actually had total receipts of seven million five hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars. We had increase in our occupation tax. The two things I look at when I see sort of the health of how we're doing in the city and it went up eighteen percent. So that was a good healthy increase in occupation tax. Our sales tax went up five point seven percent. So both, we had decent increases in both of those revenues. Those are our two largest revenues that we have. And so we, we did well in that increases in both of them, which, you know, says something about the health of our economy and we came in pretty good. If you'll turn over to page four, well, turn to page three, the fourth page is just the totals page. We budgeted six million eight hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars worth of expenses and we actually had six million nine hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars. So our budget, the budgeting process worked pretty well. We came fairly close to the numbers that we complete with. When you're dealing with a seven million dollar budget, you know, we're not gonna hit it exactly, but we came pretty close. That gave us a surplus for the year of six hundred and eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars where we budgeted a surplus of one hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. So that's to give you an indication of our unaudited figures, haven't been audited yet, but of how we did last year's budget, when we did our budget and did our, our numbers and what we thought we'd have and how we ended up. The next handout was our budgeted numbers for 2019. And what I always start with is we're, we're real conservative on revenues. We, we budget revenues each year at the prior year level. We don't budget for increases in case we don't get an increase. So that's what we did for this year. We started off with that, that level of revenues that we're budgeting. In other words, whatever we received in sales tax last year, that's what we're gonna budget this year. Unless we know for sure there's gonna be an increase or decrease in something. We've been given a policy of, it's a conservative policy. We're not, even though we had a five percent increase in sales tax and an eighteen percent increase in occupation tax last year, we didn't budget for that because you never, you never know what is gonna go up or down. So we, we try to be conservative and don't, we just budget at the level of our current revenues. We, everything else in the expense line, expenditure items, we budget based on last year's expenses and then Angela will, and the department heads will sometimes bring the things that they know was gonna happen. If we know were gonna happen, we include it in the budget. Some things that we think might happen, we wait till you make a decision on. The main thing that we have this year is salaries. We budgeted the same levels as last year. The, Ronnie had some step raises and we included that because step raises, I understand, are automatic if they receive that, either they've been here long enough or some sort of promotion, that they get that step raise. And he provided that. And we, we did not budget any increase in people till we see now our budget's gonna come out. And, and if, I know that Tim told me he would like to have, add a, a fireman, for instance. I just talked to him, I saw him, but I didn't include that because that will be something you'll have to make that decision on. And so we budgeted salaries at what they were last year and any step raises that we knew were gonna happen. Now, the, this thing is really different this year. And if you look on page three of the handout, it's September 30th, 2019. Down at the bottom of page three, we have four rather large projects. If they all are done this year and, and Angela, I think we thought that they probably would be, or we're at least gonna put them in the budget like they would be because the recreation center, I think, will definitely.
We've paid some on this already, but there's still quite a bit more.
Yeah. Angela, she put down for me what we thought it would take to finish these projects. The County Road 35 project, if that is done this year and that we have to fund all of it, that amount is in there. You see that at the bottom of the page three? The last five items are projects that you might wanna postpone, but they might happen this year and we put them in there, just where you could have a look at. The Ragsdale Housing Authority project, the Buccaneer Street project, and then we had a crosswalk, sidewalk project, Highway 17 project. And those are expenditures that we think it would take to finish each one of those. If, if for instance, you got some help on some of these, of course, if we knew that and, and any of these projects, like from the county or somebody else was, would help with the project, of course, we would change those numbers. But right now, if we have to fund them, and we do those projects in the next year, and these are, are, you know, large projects, then that will leave us with a budgeted deficit for this year and that's that final figure. If we do all those projects, we're estimating that our budget will be at a deficit of one million eight hundred and six thousand dollars. That would have to be either borrowed or spent out of our reserve. If that's been financed in some way or spent out of the money that we've accumulated and saved over the years that we had budget surplus.
How, how much money do we have in that?
Angela knows probably no better than I with how much money we've turned.
The bond money?
No, the bond, you're talking about those savings?
Yes, that we've got, that we've saved for the last year's savings, we've still got that, to go to pay this off if we needed to.
Do you have those numbers?
I have it, I'm gonna have it with me.
That's all right.
She, she can get you that.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, I got it right here. I'm sorry.
Now, this was from September. Are you talking about like the money we've got in reserve that we've put at First State Bank and at People's Trust?
I, I guess he says that we should have money left at the end of this year, even though we're gonna be minus that one million eight hundred and six thousand.
We put a million dollars at First State Bank, one of the last administrations, still in office, and right now it's currently one million twelve thousand that's in it at First State Bank. And then I think we have a.
I thought we put some more in there.
We did it, it's a certificate of deposit that we put at People's Trust. We did that.
It's another million.
Yeah, it's a million there.
So that's, it's two million in this. That's enough if we got in trouble to pay this off regardless. That's what I thought, I thought it was money.
And yeah, Angela does those every month. She sends me a, a copy of them, how much money we got in our accounts and, and I'm sure she has a sheet for you too, but she does a monthly statement on that, so she can get that for you at any time. You know, this is a work session, of course, I know you want to, you don't have to make that decision whether you're gonna do those projects or anything, but this is what we start with to show you that if you did do those projects this year and decided to fund them, we would run a deficit this year because these are large projects.
We've still got that two million to back that up and wouldn't be broke, but.
Yes, yes.
We're just gonna be paying interest if we don't.
We, as far as the equipment is concerned, let me discuss that a little bit. That is on page two of your September 30th, 2019 handout. And I budgeted the equipment for those, you see administrative department, street department, police department and fire, that was what was actually spent last year in those departments. Recreation didn't spend any last year on equipment, but they have asked for forty-five thousand in equipment this year when they submitted their, their department head. So that's not been included. You might wanna just pencil that in because I, I didn't know, these, these departments usually have equipment every year. So that's why I included them because they're gonna have something every year and we included them at their last year's levels. Recreation didn't have any equipment last year, like I said, but they requested some this year. So you, you know, you just have to ask the department head what, what he's wanting this year. He just gave me a number. I don't, I don't know, and it was something that we probably used as a, in a past year. And these items, you know, you've always approved as they come up and we've always budgeted the items for the departments that we know have, have to have equipment every year, but we don't promise those that you have to approve when they come up. It's not a normal operating monthly expense and they're in our budget because if, if they've been spending it every year, chances are they're gonna spend some this year. But we've always kept that approval for you when the time comes to buy something, you know, they're run it by you. Also, we have a capital improvement fund that, and I don't know how much is in it, Angela, you know, that's, comes in every year from the state. And we have the new fire department tax fund that we collected around sixty-two thousand dollars last year that's in a separate fund. That can be used for equipment and must be used for, I understand. So sometimes there's some funds that's not our general funds that we have access to. Those are too, that I know of, that the capital improvement fund comes from the state, has to be spent on capital improvements and I understand the new fire department tax has to be spent on capital improvements.
Now, do we have money in those funds, not in those, do we have a different bank account for that?
We do.
Do we have money in those?
Yes.
Accounts?
Yes, you don't know how much, but. I don't know. Angela, do you own those two accounts?
Yes, on the capital improvement, this is as of the end of September, the balance was a hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. And on the three mill tax.
How much you say?
I'm sorry. On the capital improvement right now, as of the end of September, and I don't think we've spent anything out of it that I think of. It was a hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the three mill tax fund at the end of September, now that's the one that we collect for the additional tax that they pass.
Yes.
Now, can, is that to be used just for the fire department? That's the way I took it?
That's the way I took it.
Okay.
And, and I think, I, I hadn't actually got the law down ready, but I believe it's equipment items.
Yes.
In the fire.
And that's what it's been spent on.
Yes.
Been spent, but at the end of September, it had thirty-nine thousand five hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents. Who approves those expenditures? I think right now Tim and the mayor have been looking over on it. I don't know if there's any regulations. I haven't seen anything on how exactly.
When it comes, yeah. So is it by turn out of equipment and other things that the department approved?
How, how much can you approve without us approving? Now, I'm not saying this, and I, I just wonder what it is that you can approve without the council approve. I, I heard this before I got on the council, that there's only a certain amount of money that had been discussed before and the other, other people ran here.
Of the city's money, I can spend five hundred dollars. I don't know, I understand this is the fire department's money for equipment.
But then the fire department come under this council?
I don't know how this money's done, this tax money feels like.
I'm just trying now, but.
You know, set aside for them, Gene, and I, I don't know.
Well, somebody's gotta be responsible for it. I don't know who else could be responsible except.
Well, the city, we've got it under a dual control account and he doesn't spend a penny to get on cover and ask us to release the money for and show us what he's spending for. Equipment for the department. If you want it approved in the council meetings, we'll have to change the procedure.
That's not what I brought, I was just wondering.
It was being standing, who was responsible?
You got any ideas, Allen?
Well, the only, I know.
I don't question.
The state bid law has so many exemptions and it's got a lot of exemptions in it. I don't know that this money's been exempted from the state bid law, so, which is fifteen thousand dollars. So I would think that there would have to be some sort of oversight, you know, and we're.
They've got their own board.
They, they do, okay. I, I didn't know that.
They've got their own attorney.
Okay.
And nobody's ever explained to me how it's to be spent except for what it's to be spent for.
I don't see any problem as long as it's been spent for equipment. The, the only thing is, is since it's new, we do probably have to find out who has the final legal authority over how it's spent. And I guess Scott would, is probably, will have to look that up for you.
I'm not, I'm not questioning anybody's honesty.
Right, exactly.
I understand, I, I, this comes up, I, I just wonder if we're responsible, you know, and if we are, we know nothing about it. So I'm certainly not questioning.
We've probably got some responsibility. I guess Angela, do you balance their bank account and you, and do it just like you do all the other city accounts?
Yes, any deposits they get and anything they buy comes through me.
Okay. So I would think, Gene, that, that we would have some responsibility because it's going through our city clerk.
Well, that's what I thought.
And, and I'm glad the mayor is, is approving those. And that's, that's probably for you guys to decide if, if there's been a law on that or not, it's a meeting. But I would, I would certainly be cautious and just make sure we're doing everything.
I don't mind mayor approving it at all when it comes up in a meeting like this and we know nothing about it. Yeah. And we, we didn't know, I don't guess any of us knew anything about it being spent or having them.
The volunteer fire departments don't have to account to any municipal authority. They have their own money, their own secretary, they're not reporting to anyone on the money they spend.
That's why I don't even know because I knew that there's fire departments out there getting this money, this not even connected to the same.
They get paid in the same way Hamilton gets, a paid fire department.
So I, well, I don't, I don't know. I can't answer that exactly what our responsibility is. That's gonna have Scott's, gonna have to look that up.
Well, I don't mind as long as we're not responsible.
Yeah.
If it came back that some of it went and we were supposed to be responsible for it, then we better carry it, see?
Yeah, I understand.
And that's one reason why we put it in a separate account. You know, we were kind of, felt more comfortable doing it that way so that we didn't, it wasn't lost in the big general fund and that way we, we knew.
There's a place of record on every penny that's come to us and every penny that's gone out.
I think that's a good idea, that's fine, you know.
Tim has asked to withhold one cent he brings, his check he receives every time to, heard he's looking the bank and he comes to get a check when he spends money. If that's not a good way to do it, just tell me and we won't do it that way anymore.
Hey, I'm not questioning that, now don't get me wrong. I just wanted to know what we're responsible for and what we're not, you know what?
And it, it looks like from this list that some of the eligible expenditures are things that we have budgeted, like subscriptions, that can come out of that money, utilities can come out of that money. So there's things that we have in our budget that can actually come out of that separate money.
You're talking about the fire money?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, there's a whole list of things that the county's spent on, but there's a whole list of things that it can be spent on. Acquisition of fire trucks and fire station, purchasing of firefighting equipment, fire training expense, fire vehicle and station insurance, oil, gas and vehicle repairs, utilities, station repairs, lawnmower and related supplies. So there's a whole list of things that that money can be spent on and then there's a whole list of money, things that it can't be spent on. But I don't see in this little clip just exactly who decides how it's made.
Yeah, I sure don't know any, I, I have not, that's something for the lawyer to decide anyway, exactly the legality of who, who's gonna approve it. And so I'm sure Scott can look at that and just make sure that the way we're doing it's the correct way and when he did something different, I'm sure he recommends them.
Well, she says she's got all the records on.
She said personally, I'm saying, yeah. I just, you know.
I might copy all the deposits and all the checks that are right and whatnot.
I, I wasn't questioning you, I just didn't know.
But I just did that.
Yeah, Angela can, can forever be, any expense that I, if needed. Just be aware that that fund is there, something new and that it can would be spent in the fire department for, for eligible items under that law.
I would think because you've got all these departments receiving this tax money, that they have a more inclusive list because a lot of those departments don't have backup suit to pay their power bill and what have you. They have to pay out of those funds probably some, for some of those things that were named here.
That's right, there's some fire departments not even connected with an incorporated city that is getting that money. That's right, there's some fire departments not even connected with an incorporated city that is getting that money, the way I understand it.
And our department has a lot of good, getting good equipment out of this, and we take care of their power bill and their, uh, other utilities that, that they need to operate the department. They, they, they have some luxury in this, and, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because they can have the best equipment to operate that this money will afford them.
So, to sum everything up, as far as the numbers I brought to you, we, we have, uh, we've had a healthy financial year, no question about it. We have, uh, built up reserves from our budget circuses the last few years. And, uh, but we've got some big projects ahead of us, I don't know if we'll have any help on them from other sources or not, if, if not. That is what it's, it's gonna cost our best estimate of the actual expenditures that'll cost that city to get those projects completed. And, uh, since that will throw us into a one-year budget deficit, we would have to fund it either with borrowed money or from money that we've saved and preserved in previous year.
On the, uh, Buccaneer Street, uh.
That's what I was gonna ask.
One of you, see, that was not a matching grant, so where, where did we come up with those, those numbers?
Uh, Angela got it for me.
Those were for, um, looking through what we had, that was for the engineering and the inspection part that in the contract.
So, it's, uh, is it, is it actual or estimated?
Uh, it's pretty close, it's pretty close.
How do we do on salaries this year, Alan?
Uh.
We, Angela and I talked something about that, during the winter, we had a lot of, um, guys that had to go out and work extra, running, decided shortages in his department because of people leaving and. Trying to get people hired, and he decided to work some off for overtime, and we've had some things at the water treatment plant that's caused, um, a little chaos, some retirees, and we've had one that had. Um, torn replacement, been off work, so we paid a lot of overtime in this last year, so can you break us down?
I've got, I've got some numbers that will help you sort of see that, Mayor.
If we could avoid that, it would really help us a lot.
For instance, in the, uh, in the street department, we budgeted, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars worth of, uh, salaries, and we came in at three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. So, we had about forty thousand dollars over what we thought it would be. In recreation, we had, uh, ten thousand dollars more than we thought salaries was gonna be. Police, we had eleven thousand more than what we thought there would be, and on fire, we had, uh, about fifty thousand dollars more than we thought there would be. So, that would be overtime, uh, that, uh, we'll get all those up, and it's gonna be somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. If not more of, uh, overtime and, and above what we thought we would, uh, our, that salaries would be.
And the water's not mentioned.
Yeah, and I've got those waters.
That's totally separate.
Let me get those to you, I've got a handout on water.
Because then that would get lit in that department.
Here's the, uh, the water numbers.
When overtime's necessary, I'm all taking care of our employees, but if we could cut any of that back, it would be a great benefit for the city as far as. Staying closer to the budget number.
And Alan, one other thing, on the salaries and stuff, the, the way retirement systems is changing, how they're gonna do things, and, and some of the insurance requirements. I don't like, a lot of times we'll hire summer help, you know, we're gonna be very restricted on how many hours a person can work. If it's nineteen, it's nineteen, when they get nineteen hours, they're gonna have to go home. And, and it may take you hiring, instead of where you've been hiring two summer helps, you may have to hire three or four, because we are gonna have to stick to those guidelines on the hour.
You start paying benefits after that many hours.
You have to start paying retirement and, uh.
Part-time is.
All of our insurance.
Are very limited, and she went to the school, really stressed this way, and scared her to death to come back saying, whoa, we can't be doing this.
You know, because one, one town got, um, they had to go back five years on an employee and all of them health insurance.
Alan, I'm sorry, interfere with your presentation, go ahead.
On our, our water department. Hamptons. Water department, their bond recently paid out, that was about five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a year that we've been paying on that bond. We've, we've had to transfer, we transferred eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to the water department last year. Five-hundred-and-sixty of that was for the bond, and the rest was, uh, for operating. The, uh, I did, I did a lot of analysis on the water board and, uh, water operations. And. Which looks like next year, we're estimating that we'll have, and that's included in our budget, that we'll have to give two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars to the, uh, water board for operations. We've been having to give, like, last year we gave eight-hundred-and-seventy, so, uh, the bond paying out is helped tremendously. But I looked up some numbers, you know, you did, we did pass some increases.
Well, sure.
Yes. We are, we are budgeting, if our numbers are correct, I just handed you the numbers for nineteen, that we will have a two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar operating deficit in the water board. For, for next year. We've started breaking out in, uh, departments of, of sewer, water, and just seeing where our costs are. That two-hundred-and-seventy thousand deficit, sixty-three thousand of it is in the water operations. Two-hundred-and-seven thousand of it is in the sewer operations, religion, two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars running sewer. We had three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars of sewer revenue last year, and the utilities at the sewer plant is two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So, you can see that, uh, when you add salaries and everything else, and that's how we get to that two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollar deficit we're running. Uh, and I've got some handouts for you, I'm gonna give you, just to take home if you wanna look at of all these departments. Uh, we would have to increase sewer rates sixty-four percent to make that up. If you included water and sewer, we would have to include, we could do a fourteen percent. Uh, increase in sewer and water rates to bring it to breakeven, that's what it would take. I've always thought that someday having our good source of water was gonna be, would pay off for us, so I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, you know, Southwest, they're having all kinds of trouble with water. Uh, this causes scares out there, and I don't know if it'll happen here or not, I don't know, you know, it's highly regulated. Regulates us, it's highly regu- uh, regulated business. But that's, that's where we're losing money, is in the sewer operations, it just costs so much, the utilities, whether they run big pumps or something down there, uh, the, the utility bills are. Uh, you're getting twenty thousand dollars a month to run that, so we have, we have.
That goes to our own power company.
We have, uh, so we broke out some of these costs more than we ever had to see where we're losing money, and I've got these for you, I'm gonna do it, uh, before you leave, I'll hand you out some by department. So, if you wanna look at, uh, uh, we can look at it.
We're gonna need to increase those rates a little bit at a time, to try to make this up, or are we just gonna keep on giving it to them, let it dig it up?
I just wanted you to have that information in case, you know, that, uh, uh, just to look at, and how much we're losing and where we're losing. You know, our, our, if I'm not mistaken, when you get the, the water bills, sewer is, is billed with the water, and it's a certain percent of you.
Water bill.
Water bill. Uh, so I don't know, you can ask Rodney, you know, uh, he, he can talk with the state, A D M, other water departments, and, and see what he can come up with. But, uh, you know, it'd be great if we could get that deficit, uh, or, or start planning, but I can remember when the deficit was four or five hundred thousand a year. Now, I'm gonna tell you, uh, before the, that twelve percent, we were really losing money in, in water and sewer, so.
But we not add, say, five or six percent each year till we got it up to where it was pretty close to, uh, what it's costing?
That, that's one alternative, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna do it all at once.
Right.
But, you know, I hate to do it anyway, but, you, you know, if you're gonna use it, it's gotta be paid for, I mean, we're spending taxpayers' money.
Right. And, you know, Rodney can tell you where you big users are, who's a big user of, of the sewer and, and water, and.
Yeah.
And, you know, where you can come up with some solutions, but yeah, Jean, the only way is to, uh, unless you can figure out. You know a way you can cut out that tire, uh, cost, uh, unless you invested in some sort of new equipment, and that would probably be expensive, so. You know, I don't know what the solutions are, but, but certainly that's, that's what we'd have to be looking at doing.
Well, you're talking about the five or six percent, how, how much you say it would take?
It would take fourteen across the board.
Well, if we added five percent, you're talking about most people, it wouldn't be over, be fi- less than five dollars probably. To, uh, but most people's under a hundred dollars, I'm sure, aren't they?
So, the problem is really nearly half in the last ten years, we're losing a lot more than that, but it's still a problem, we're still losing.
And we can't get it, you know, us, we, we're here to watch over it, well, we're gonna have to try to get it to where it's, uh, everybody's paying their way.
Well, that's why I need to do a study for us and present it at our next work session.
Have we had a raise in the water department? It's been years, hasn't it?
At my last year, you're bored, haven't?
First year we took office, we did a five percent increase on water.
And that, that automatically raises.
I believe it's first time in eleven years.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
We were really losing a lot of money in, uh, this, that helped, I mean, it's, it's a little over half of what it used to be. I can remember four, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year that was losing, and that, that was unsustainable, you know, we knew we'd have to do something to cut that down, but. But that's just where we're at.
Yeah. Well, we'd have to do something. You go, start putting somewhere, that's.
Project bond paid out, that, that's, that's a good thing, now we can concentrate on other debts of the city.
Yes.
With that money that we were paying out to the.
Yeah, with that same money, well, you're right, we're paying off some city debt now, but the debt load is the same, but it's paying off some of the city bonds now, and that water's been paid out, so. That's a good thing, and, uh. We have, uh, we've, we've got an increase in hospital insurance. The city's park is running now about thirty-nine thousand dollars a month. If we pick up the increase totally by the city, it'll run about forty-four thousand a month, it'll be about five thousand dollars a month more if the city picks up the increase, we ran the numbers on it. And, uh, so that's a decision, you know, that you'll, you'll need to make also, and, uh, I, once you make that decision, we'll incorporate it into the budget.
Well, it's gonna help us if we get these new businesses in, if we can get more of those.
I, actually, uh, sales tax, uh, to increase, occupation tax, gasoline tax probably.
You're right.
Um, there's, there's a lot going on, hopefully that is good. So, it's not bleak, but any means, we've just got some big projects, I always said to you a year, that we've got big projects, and, uh, we've got to figure out how to fund them.
Well, maybe there's new businesses will make up the loss, if we're gonna, it'll, it'll start coming in by the time we have to pay these other jobs, I think, yeah.
We, we also had an increase in salary figured in, uh, for the city clerk that figured in. And to my knowledge, uh, of course, I know you'll have some questions, I've got some more information to give you. One of those informations is, is the sewer department, how much we're losing. The water department is not breakeven, but it's getting, it's getting there, uh, like I said, we're, it's gonna be a loss of sixty-three thousand dollars this year projected. And that's the best it's ever been, uh, if we can, if Rodney can figure out something on the sewer side, that maybe we start doing that.
What was the percentage of the increase you wanted? Was your study on five percent, is that what you?
Mister.
That's what I said.
I mentioned about five percent till we get it up to breakeven.
Have one Hershey bag, just give it a little.
No, you can use the.
That's right.
I mean, really, you know, I, I just feel particularly, I just barely didn't buy enough, but I've been there, and that few dollars makes a difference.
Of course, I can quit taking bath, quit using water, go into the woods, can't stop.
Yeah.
See if you're gonna blow a cat off.
That's not the good old, that's not the good old days.
Hey, y'all maybe don't know about that.
We'll look at those pictures for a while, and then we'll use them.
Uh, so to sum it up, I think we've got all, these numbers are gonna be, as far as operational, uh, they're gonna be right on the money. I know Tim wanted a new employee, if you, uh, some of the other departments had, you know, I, I don't know. I just happened to see Tim, and he told me I would like a new employee, I didn't put it in there, but, uh, you know, that's something, once you decide on that. The insurance and these large projects that we've got, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, any other questions you've got. And I've got a handout, I've got every department broken out, the, the one I want you to look at, though, is, uh, and the one that Rodney will be interested in. Is that one that, uh, we're on the sewer part. Like I said, we're losing about, uh, two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars a year in sewer operations, and it's nearly impossible to increase sewer rates sixty-four percent, so. We'll have to do it either through a water resource or, or some sort of way he can figure out the lower cost.
But in the sewer, in that price according to the water bill.
It's been that way.
Yeah.
Uh, so when we increase water, sewer gets an increase.
But if you just can increase five dollars, it wouldn't be much.
I'm pretty certain sewers always lost money in a big way, uh, it's just now we're sort of breaking it out just to see how much. And that, you know, that's, uh, eighteen thousand a month or so we're losing, that, that maybe we, at least where you can start addressing it, you know?
The E P A regulations are almost making. The E P A regulations are almost making it impossible to break even on sliver because of the high. You've got to really concentrate on getting that water bit released.
Highly regulated, and they check it quite often, I understand.
All the time, and we got to have a report on hand whenever.
Yeah, that's why it's hard to do it by cutting expenses, because they're, they're right there checking it off.
Well, you just gotta make it up somewhere, right? You just gotta make it, man, you're gonna lose, and you gotta make it up somewhere.
So, uh, I've got some more handouts I'm gonna hand to you, and, uh, the insurance, uh.
Were you surprised at how much the insurance would have this year, or was?
I was sort of expecting that sort of increase, uh, this, it seemed like it's an issue why.
You don't know, you don't have any suggestions about insurance changes that we won't need to make to, to save money on the total bill?
Uh, I'll tell you what I do, I'll call the League of Municipalities and, and see if they can give me some ideas on what other cities are doing.
Well, we wanna provide as good of insurance as we can for our people, but it's getting hard to just keep beating the increases, every time it happens, and it's happening almost annually.
I'll try to, I'll try to see if they, uh, since we're a member, they're, they'll share information with us pretty good, maybe for some other towns or two, other cities, if anything, or, or they're just eating the increase like we did, I, I don't know, but it's something that goes up, seems like every year.
And a problem we're having too, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but I'm trying to add stuff while, you know, we're getting on the subject. You know, we push it hard for everybody to participate in those wellness screenings every year, and we have to meet a certain percentage, and that keeps us in a preferred bracket that actually makes our insurance cheaper. And, you know, we have trouble getting our employees to participate, and, you know, the one, our individual employees don't pay for their insurance, the ones that have family do pay a percentage, so. You know, a lot of times the ones that aren't paying for it don't, they're like, nah, I don't, I'm not worried about participating. When it hurts us as a group, and, and with those changes that are coming up, you know, a lot of places are making it mandatory, whether, if you don't wanna do it here, like in a group setting, there's a form we can give you to take to your doctor, but it's very important for us to, to stay in that preferred bracket, or it would cost us a lot more than what it is right now. That's why, you know, everybody needs to participate. You know, we're not doing it to be noticed, we don't even look at that stuff. We've got, there's got to be employee participation, because if it puts us in a different bracket, it will cost us more.
Here's that handout on the sewer department, this, this where you can look at if you, you'll have to look at it now, but this, so you'll have the information.
Well, is that utility bill sturdy in the face?
Yes, it's, uh, quite hard.
And the garbage collection thing go into the, into the revenue for the water?
Yes, yeah, they do. They, they go into the city, the garbage, yeah. It's, it may be billed on the water bill, but we do the transfer, yeah, we do the transfer, so it's, it comes in the city. Takes a lot of money.
It's just a negative figure, and that's where it's gonna be.
Yeah, we started breaking it down into departments where we, some departments losing a lot of money, we at least see that it's losing money, and maybe come up with a solution, but if you don't know, you got the problem, you can attack it, so. We're trying to get you more information, providing some support to the team.
Well, we, we have departments that we offer services through that don't have revenue producing.
Right.
These are revenue-producing departments, uh, your water and sewer, uh, we charge for those services, we charge for garbage. So, on those that are not breaking even, the obvious thing is to adjust the bills, to at least get it closer.
Well, you gotta work on all of it, though, it'd be something that I, you know, you know.
We can't do it all at once, and it's just not a way. We, we realize that we'll provide services to the city that will not give us that revenue, but, when you provide clean water and sewer services and garbage services, citizens have to take those services.
And also, it's a good time, the budget time, if you got any questions, and, and if you think about any questions. We're just like Gene, asking about, you know, the, the fire department, that new money. And stuff like that, this is a good time to, if you got any questions, to, uh, ask about it, or call me if you got any questions. If you think about something, how we're doing stuff, because Angela does a monthly report, and we have information on a monthly basis that, that you can go ahead and, or if you've got any question on how we're doing it.
Well, Angela and I are gonna call a department head meeting, and we're gonna discuss departments that have a full standard crew, and we're gonna try to avoid these overtime hours, if it's not absolutely, I mean, assessed. That's, that's over a hundred thousand dollars in this year's payroll, overtime hours, well over a hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, it was well over that, because we already had some overtime figured in our budget, saying we went above it, so. Yeah, it's, it's that, at least that much, well, not.
That's really nice, if we just go up five percent on this stuff, we're losing so much money on a little at a time, because these people, a lot of them can't pay it, and I, really, I feel for them, I mean, even five percent on it. Well, most of them want sixty dollars, so that wouldn't be, three dollars.
And partly, it's, you can tell you it's hard to avoid overtime sometimes, you know, especially police and fire, when you gotta have somebody there twenty-four seven, you know, it's just, it's, it's not easy.
Alan?
I've got you a bunch of information, so I know if you've got any questions, you, you call me.
You have loaded our wagon.
Yes, I have.
You've done a good job, I like to say, you've done a real good job, and letting us know what we're facing, and of course, I'm just glad, and I know everybody else here, I'm just glad that we got the money right now to pay it.
So, uh, I know I gave you a lot too long, but you can look at that, and then, uh, there's a few, like I said, those few items, we're gonna make a decision on, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and finish the budget up.
If, if questions come up after the fact, we'll be in touch, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions at hand right now that you will ask Alan before he finishes up his section of today's workshop? We've got several other items we wanna cover if we can. Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Two letters, uh, dating for the, uh, police department, I'm gonna let y'all go in whichever order you wanna go. Jimmy's gonna do his presentation first. Jimmy, if you wanna sit and talk through that, and I, if I can, we can all communicate better. Thanks a lot, Alan.
Thank you.
Timmy's gonna talk to us about a new communications system to replace some current equipment. He's met, uh, lead with the gas district and some other mayors on behalf of the police department, so. Lord is yours, Jimmy.
Thank you, sir. Okay, what it is, is currently, uh, the gas board pays for our push-to-talk radios, which is run through an inter-op system through the sheriff's department, where we receive our, uh, radio communications transmissions. Right now, currently, the, uh, one towards outbound gas pays twenty-one forty-six towards the bill that we receive. Our bill is thirty-four dollars and three cents per officer who is patrolman. Uh, that goes for the push-to-talk and cell phone service, due to the fact of calling people from our cars when we receive the calls from forty-nine. So the city is out twelve dollars and two cents per radio, or fifty-seven cents. There's new, uh, communications through A T and T, it's called, uh, FirstNet, and what that is, is, everybody operates off of a certain band for commercial use or consumer use. What they've done now is made a public safety band to where our phones will work in crisis where your phones won't, you know, because of the frequency that it runs. So, what they've done with this is, not only have they brought this new communications, and we're, we're gonna have ninety-nine point six percent of the rural outbound covered, so we'll have service to work, we'll have better service, and, uh, with that, people think, oh, well, with that, you're gonna get a rise in cost. Actually, the cost is gonna go down, so for the gas board, it would go from twenty-one forty-six to seventeen ninety-nine a month. For the push-to-talk, they pay a proportion of ours. Uh, the cities will go from twelve fifty-seven to, uh, four dollars and some change per unit, rather than twelve fifty-seven. So, we'll save on that, also through our wireless parts that we have with our patrol units, uh, so we have our computers operational. Uh, right now, we pay forty-one twenty-four per unit, okay? Uh, this price will go down to, uh, thirty-seven ninety-nine per unit, and which is a savings of about four dollars per unit also. So we're looking at saving eight to ten dollars per unit that we have, with signing the contract with FirstNet. We won't be able to go through the gas board with this, because they're not public safety, they will not be able to, uh, sign a contract on them, so, each individual city would have to do that. The gas board is still gonna be willing to pay for the push-to-talk that we currently use right now, and they currently pay for. They're still gonna be, uh, willing to pay for that, what they will do is, once we receive a bill, and right now, we have thirty-six units on it, uh, that's the fire department, us, and two of the water department, uh, I think it's the sewer plant, uh, guys out in Vic and another one. Uh, they have two units on our system, but what they're gonna do is, they're gonna, we'll have to get our own account through A T and T with FirstNet. Once we get that account, uh, they can send a invoice over to the gas board, they'll reimburse us their part, uh, part of it, like they've been doing already, uh, with our bill and everything. They sent us one right now, currently, they sent us a bill for what the city owes them, and we reimburse them. What it's gonna do is just swap it over, but we're gonna save, like I said, nine to ten dollars per unit, you know, or per officer.
So you guys have been dropping some calls.
Oh, yeah, uh, in our computers, if you're in a, in an area where you have low coverage, they, they told us the, uh, commercial or the consumer side of it is so overwhelmed, this is why everybody's phones are not working as good, you're dropping calls, you go from one antenna to another antenna, it has to sync up to that antenna where you may drop that call. Even though you're looking at service on your phone, you're still gonna drop the call. What this is gonna do is gonna boost the, uh, signal strength for public safety, and it's gonna give us priority over those towers. So if, uh, if you look at firstnet.gov, if you get a chance, and you can see the story behind the hurricane in South Carolina, where they came in, if they had a low coverage area or a no coverage area during the storm, they brought their trucks in, and they gave the public safety service. If we have an area here that is bad terrain, even if they brought their truck in, it's not really gonna help us. They actually have drones that they will bring up and hover it twenty-three hours a day, uh, they'll bring it down, one will change the battery and go back up, where we'll have service in that area, so it, you know, a lot of people have the, uh, they'll drop a call, it'll go to the service, and they can mark a spot. But A T and T's smartest spot for consumer is not looked at, but with the new, uh, contract K I B signed on October third, now, if we mark a spot with this FirstNet, uh, work order goes in, and they have to get into the area, figure out what's going on, and attempt to get service in that area, uh, pretty much immediately, or they lose money every month, or a quarter day, sorry, quarter day they lose money. But either way it goes, it's gonna be a win-win for both the city by saving money, you know, less money out of our budget, and with the service that it's gonna offer to us, the only thing is, is we have to sign a contract with A T and T, which we already have with our air cards, but, uh, the gas board will be coming off of that, and they'll just be reimbursing us for the money that, uh, they pay for our push-to-talk.
So we're actually gonna be saving that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Well, I don't, that's what y'all want, I don't see no reason.
Couple of hundred dollars, and it's gonna be, the police department, the fire department, and the two, uh, units they have with the water department, I think it's considering the, uh, water treatment plant they have, uh, it's gonna save all the way, you know.
Postpaid service.
Yes, and, like I said, it's with those two units, uh, the water department that we have, if a disaster happens or something like that happens, what they can do is actually boost their priority to where they have the same priority as us, uh, and their signal strength will continue to be good when everybody else's go down, so it'll, you know.
Do you see any, I guess, log distance or?
So really, nothing will change, the gas company's still gonna provide those links.
Yes.
If something happens, they'll replace, or we may have to pay.
Well, as of right now, we purchase our links ourselves, you know, the last time that we done this, when we went to those solid radios, we, we purchased three that were at cost of, I think, a hundred dollars a piece, and then, uh, each unit cost ninety-nine cents when we purchased them. And they're gonna offer that same deal, it'll be the ninety-nine cents for the, uh, units our patrol officers have. We have three that have data service on them, uh, that are at a hundred dollars, but the fire department, I think, Tim and Matt are the only two that have, uh, data on theirs, and the rest of the firefighters have just the push-to-talk, they don't even have cell phone service. So, it's, it's actually gonna lower the bill across the board, you know?
But right now, the gas company bills us, is that right?
Yes, currently, yes.
So now you're saying it would flip it where we have to bill them?
Yes.
We, we keep up with everybody's, and then we bill them their portion?
Yes, the push-to-talk.
Are y'all gonna do that?
The push-to-talk.
Are y'all keeping up with that?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can, the citizen's keeping up with that, uh, because it'll be the same.
I'm asking for obvious reasons.
Well, it'll be the same every month, it'll never adjust, it'll always be the same bill, like this, this bill is always the same every month. It, it'll in turn be always the same for them, they'll pay the thirty-five units that we have, and, uh, when I say thirty-five units, because Tim has an inter-op unit that's on this, uh, spreadsheet here, that he himself pays for the fire department, so they can have that inter-op to the firehead that he has.
I mean, I know we've paid the bills, but that would still take us a year, but as far as keeping up with everybody?
The, the only difference is, um, like right now, I think, ten of them have four of the air cards and the fire trucks for the use of their iPads, and we have, uh, thirteen of their cards for our patrol vehicles. FirstNet will, will cancel our contract with A T and T, and we'll go with a contract of FirstNet, the units are forty dollars a piece. Uh, when they do a new sign up with our account, uh, we get a fifty dollar credit, so we're gonna save ten dollars per unit. I mean, we're actually, they're actually gonna be paying us to, to purchase the units, and that's gonna drop, you know, like I said, four dollars, uh, per unit, so.
Your goal is to get us to put it on the agenda to approach.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And once they do that, they'll come in and they, and I know Wimpel's gonna be presenting theirs to, uh, their council, and you is gonna be presenting theirs. I haven't talked with, uh, Haverford or Hattaway yet, but I know they want us kinda on board all at the same time, because when they do this transfer, they don't wanna be paying, you know, their part of it, and then us paying our part.
How soon do you think this can happen?
I think she said it'll be two weeks.
Okay.
From the time that we sign the contract with them, two weeks, she'll be here with our new units. Uh, what we'll do is give our other ones back to them, and we'll get the new units, and they'll have us set up ready to go then.
So ideally, you make us address this at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Work it out.
Yes, sir.
Also, they, also, you'll get the same spiel tomorrow at the gas board.
Yes.
So that's basically what we're doing, is notifying you what we're gonna have to do, council board have to do. And then they'll notify gas board tomorrow and then we take action on Monday, so then we'll be up to speed with FirstNet.
So this is from AT&T to you?
Yeah, well, it's, it's called FirstNet, it's the public safety portion of AT&T where they support the band that we will operate off of. We'll operate off what they call Band fourteen, it's got priority service over everybody, it's, you're not gonna drop calls at all. When you go from one antenna to the other antenna, when this antenna picks you up, you immediately change over. It's not going to have to transfer you like antennas are doing right now.
You mentioned it's for first responders?
Yes.
Police and fire and that kind of.
And we, we can actually get it on our personal cell phones and stuff, which there's only certain units that you can purchase that have the capabilities right now. Uh, and at this kinda price for, you know, the police officers as well, but you can't include your family and stuff like that on it, so. Which is a good thing, but in order for us to do that, we have to either be on this account or, uh, we have to verify ourselves every six months through AT&T, we have our own accounts. Either way it goes, they'll be able to get themselves.
And you said you could look at this at firstnet.gov?
Yes, sir.
Map slash AT&T or just firstnet.gov?
This is firstnet.gov, that's what I look at.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Jim.
Thank you.
Steve, you gonna be next on this agenda? Do you wanna start this copy of this letter first?
Yes, I'm up here. Basically, I ask, I have an officer, you know, this Friday, it'll be two weeks till turning resignation, he's leaving Friday. I'm asking that council board for me to be able to post jobs, take for certified and uncertified. For this position we fill. Now, if I do an uncertified, what that would consist of is we'll do a month of it being in the newspaper. Then we'll look at about two weeks where we can test uncertified person, do the agility testing and everything. And we'll do the hiring process, which will come into the next council meeting nearest the Spanish you've got. And if we hire them, they can, we have to have them approved and ready to go into the academy three days prior to the academy day starting, which right now is about April the twenty-seventh. So it's kind of a gamble. And I'm in need of one to replace one to leave and possibly, you know, if I text them or application to get some more in. The last time I done certification, I got two certified applicants to apply, one of them pulled his out, took a cheap job in Mary Creek, and then with the other one. So open it up, uncertified, they come with the two.
Looks like we're being drafted with this.
You want to run it for one month in the paper?
We have to have it four times in the paper and now they're gonna do once a week papers. Maybe around four papers, four in one week. That I've got a problem, the G D A passed me for approval Monday, Monday meeting.
Got a great thing.
I believe we can do that for you. Thank you. Thank you. Second one's leaving. Mark Jackson's with us today and we want him to give us all that day. Please for the Walmart traffic light, please come to the table and talk to us.
Yes. They're planning on the new service station down south of town at Walmart to, I live in around the end of November, first part of December is what I understand. Uh, there's gonna have to be two, two new red lights and traffic lights coming out of his e- exit there at that service station. Uh, while they're there, we need to go ahead, uh, we're getting a lot of complaints about the lights not changing properly, holding a long time coming out of Walmart. So I suggest that we go ahead and, and rework the loops and those lights and exchange the lights that we have there already with the new, uh, LED lights down there. Uh, our plan is, uh, in addition to that, to go ahead, uh, to state, let me say this too. Uh, the two new lights will have to be purchased by the, by the city, uh, for that exits, my understanding. Uh, and the loop can install in there. Uh, the other lights, uh, the state purchase those, will have to sign a maintenance contract to maintain them and, and purchase, no other price for the loops, uh, to get all those lights working properly down there. We've also got a problem with the light at, uh, at Courthouse, the main red light, the loops there are not working either. Uh, I think it's deposited back to the, to a timer. Uh, so, uh, the state has purchased lights for all of our red lights. Uh, they'll all be LED with a black casing on them. The city will have to, uh, pay to have those installed at, at a rate, uh, I think the lights are a hundred and fifty dollars to exchange those. It runs about fifteen hundred dollars per loop to rework the loops. So we're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars per light plus the installation of the loops and the four loops in each intersection. The intersection there at, uh, the old Weaver building there, I think is working properly, so we'll probably have to do, maybe do the loops there.
Are the lights themselves, do we have an idea in which they are?
To install, just to exchange the lights?
Well, just to, if we have to buy those lights?
I, I don't have, uh, Chase that shows electric, it's supposed to get back on the, on the price of the lights, but he did tell me the price of the, to change out the lights was a hundred and fifty. And that's, the state actually bought the lights and they'll all be LED. They seem to work a lot better than the old blue.
The state will pay for the lights?
The state has already got the lights for us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're waiting on us. Uh, the shelves, yeah, shelves should be.
The ones that we need to get up to date is the Walmart light.
That's right.
And we, we're gonna have to put that light in.
Right. Uh, coming out of the intersection.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Those two projects are coming along fast now. Jack's put their sign up today.
Total shelves, they, they should be here the end of the last week in, in November, possibly the first or second week of December. So we've worked out and scheduled to come, they've picked up the drawings, uh, and that's been approved by us, uh, the city. The city's engineers had in fact prepared, uh, how they want all that to work and submitted it to the state for their approval.
The state's letting us use his drawings to give the shelves.
Make sure they're gonna put again. We wouldn't look down on an idea.
We would, uh, the state knows, uh, Thursday, Monday was the.
Monday, yeah, Monday, that's right. So that's something that's coming up, uh, this morning too. Any questions about the, about the lights?
So, a lot of people were complaining when the red light was holding so long, cause I referred to just the three minute red light. Now, the main red light. But now, if you're the turn in line and there's only cars and trucks, regular size, five can turn on the rotation. So there's complaints about that?
Yes.
Okay, so it was too long one time and it's too short now? What's the complaint now?
When you get a green light going west, it only, it allows maybe two or three cars is what I've been told.
I count every minute. So now, if there's a, if it's like a truck pulling a, a pickup truck pulling a trailer, then it takes longer. If there's a mobile home, you might as well try to avoid it. But if there's five regular sized trucks or cars, if you're the fifth one, you're gonna make the turn. So, so that's.
I can't argue with you, but I don't count it.
So the complaint is now, it's not enough time.
Not enough time.
Okay, before there was too much time.
I never really know, but I've never really had a complaint about it too.
You know, that was the complaint before, where people were having to hold, you were having to wait too long.
Yeah, so anyway, when they come to change the lights, they're gonna make sure the loops are working properly if they need to be. Now, which the state says they need to be, I don't, I have no way of knowing for sure, but, uh, anyway. It's fifteen hundred dollars to do a loop.
And there's four of them there?
There's four at that, at that light, yeah.
Got a question, have we thought about doing what Winfield's done with the cameras?
That was my, yeah, camera, uh, Winfield has a, on their camera liter lights. They have a camera system, uh, that runs, uh, some kinda laser beam or something that checks traffic when it comes through. And it, uh, it changes the lights instead of the loops that are in the, in the panel.
Well, yes, I wonder if they have a million dollars on their system. We, we thought cameras might be good.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, same thing, bro. They are two.
I think we had, we had a problem today at Walmart and nine-one-one called and the state called and someone called, city called. So I had about three or four phone calls, uh. Sometimes if a car, this is at Walmart, the people running the red light, cause it wouldn't change. So I go, go down there and there's a car, a, a truck that's stalled on, on top of the loop, so it won't change. And so part of it is, is that kinda stuff.
But I mean, and I was there when that happened and people were having to go around it. Everybody was looking both ways, we never would've gotten out of there if we hadn't, you know, waited till traffic was clearing out. But I mean, that didn't, that was a.
It wasn't a problem with the light.
That wasn't a problem with the light, it was a problem with that.
It does hold it that time, though.
But if you, yeah, unless you. I mean, so.
I mean, there's better ways, I'm sure, if, if, if the city wants to spend the money to get the cameras and that, that kinda stuff, but. Uh, another thing, you know, if the, uh, we have to sign a maintenance agreement on those lights, we're responsible for them. The state controls them, but the city's responsible for maintaining them, maintain the lights, the loops, the boxes outside that's got all the control things in there. Uh, so we'll have to sign a new maintenance agreement for that intersection down at, uh, at Walmart.
So if that loop is covered, is it gonna work?
Well, it won't work properly, yeah, yeah, it should be, uh, not the, I don't know, the tire was set directly on top of the loop or the truck was straddling it, but it was holding and it's, of course, the police came down and helped direct traffic, but as soon as they got this truck going and, uh, it pulled off and the light started working. But it does, it's, does hold for a long time. And we, you know, those boxes, uh. When, when one of those things go bad, you, we basically have to call shelves every time to come down and fix it, cause it, it's like looking, uh, juice off of those wires and stuff. And they have to replace diffuses and such as monitors all up again, uh. Anyway, that, that's coming up and we should be moving along, we're gonna fix the, you know, probably, we are gonna start down at that intersection first and get it done so that, uh, the service station can.
More of a new business than the traffic lights.
Yeah, I think, but I think they said, you know, if lights weren't there, it's still maybe delayed to be held.
They'll not permit that exit be used and let lights work and check.
Uh, and I got news for that, it's changed itself, uh, gotten used today, the inert dumpster we have down there, uh, they're gonna go a hundred rate to two hundred dollars per drop, uh, which is four hundred dollars a week, we get two drops a week. And it's sixteen dollars per ton, so it's, it's probably got, uh, six or eight tons in it probably.
You go to municipal flip cans, right?
I do, yes.
Let's try to mark those best we can.
Sure. I think we probably sold carefully already.
We'll probably wanna come back another day to discuss, uh, our garbage again with you about three of the third and fourth can or the extra cans that we're picking up.
It'd be a good, I think it'd be a good idea, I mean, we, uh, the way I understand it, Angela, the, the garbage is included in the, oh, the water bill. That money goes back into the city, uh, city budget, uh.
How much are their garbage cans?
We sell, last, we sell for sixty-five dollars per can this.
And that's, that'll be the ones that you couldn't dump?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
They last a long.
I mean, there's other seeds.
You didn't get big ones.
That's tried out.
No, I'm gonna pay you some.
I'll, I'll rent you one up there. A lot of seeds now.
It's got wheels on it.
Yes, sir. Some other seeds charge per can. Some other seeds locally, uh, charge per can. Uh, we may pull up to a place that may have, not necessarily the, the flipper cans, that owns a lot more, but may have four or five darkish cans. Four, you know, we, uh, they're, they're four means. And one of them work good.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
I had, I, we're not gonna get through with our agenda today, and I, I really need to cover more items, y'all. We granted school some funds, uh, a few weeks ago, and I had, I've had a call concerning our elementary school, uh, campus. And, uh, we've been asked to grant a release of ten thousand dollars to go for, uh, campus playground equipment. Uh, we know, we know that we set for educational children on our rules, but they're making a major drive having raised about seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to improve the playground equipment at the elementary school. They're asking us to allow them to spend ten thousand this year's funds on that equipment.
We can't do it like that, I, I would be against that, if they usually want to do it for.
For kids. I said it's for kids. At least the kids will get something out of that.
All of us.
I got a call, they said that they're not need to spend twenty thousand, but they called me back today and said ten thousand.
Okay, well, if you're gonna address that, you might as well address the other request, because if we're gonna make an allowance for one school, then what are we gonna do about the requests from the high school? So if, if we start making allowances for one.
For they want.
We're gonna have to take into consideration the requests of the allowances or the changes, the differences from the other schools.
They were talking about security.
Yeah, they're wanting to use it for security, but the ordinance strictly says, you know, it's for educational purposes. So, I mean, I, if, if the, and the playground equipment might be considered educational, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how that would work, but if we're gonna make an exception for one school, then we're gonna have to consider the exception request for the other school.
Well, I'd like to make for both of them, cause I think that, in the, for the police and all, I think that's important too.
It's not for police.
Oh, what, what?
It's not for N S R. It's not for us or.
What's important?
It was for computer equipment, monitors and, so, but it's, I mean, once we start changing what we agreed to do, you're gonna have to have some limits or, you know, it's just gonna keep. It's, it's just gonna.
Well, how much money do we, did we say we give each school?
It's a hundred and forty-four thousand, you're right.
Hundred and thirty-five.
Thirty-five, that's right.
And divided between three schools?
Each school got thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so when they, when they spend that, and if we think that it's going for the right thing, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, it's outlining the ordinance what it can and what it can't be spent for, and I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. Once you start making exceptions, you're gonna have to entertain all the exception requests.
Well, all of them have to be approved of us if it's an exception, right? Isn't that what it says? Any exceptions have to be approved.
I don't think it's, exceptions are mentioned in there. I mean, I don't, I mean, there's always an exception, but I don't, I don't think they're addressed in there.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were, I don't know. Oh, I, I, whatever y'all.
At, at their age, I think, I think elementary children are still in a formative mode and I think playground equipment is somewhat educational. And I think, I think playground time means a lot to those children at this point in their life. And so, I, I really can't say that it's a direct, a conflict. In some ways it could be considered, but in other ways it can be sort of considered still about the use of the money in that. And there's gonna be a lot of other people involved in this fundraising. There'll be a meeting with several political figures and elected officials, see you Friday at three. And then we'll be traveling to the elementary school to look at the campus need and condition of equipment. They want to involve commissioners and other people, there'll be some representative senators, people like that here too. They just ask us to consider, I don't know, at least ten thousand when it be used for playground equipment.
Well, it's like she said, if, if we overstart it, we'll have to, at least we do something else, I don't know what, but we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to listen to a lot of different things or, and I guess that's what that was put in there for, just those particular things he had. Of course, I, but I'll let, but, that's for us.
How much have we already donated, Scott? How much have we already given, Scott?
This is just allowing them to spend it, we're not giving more money. It's just allowing them to use the money we've given them in ways that we didn't set the work exactly in our bottom some rules.
Alcohol money, right? Where, where there's alcohol money?
Yeah, I'm not, they're, they're using us for alcohol money. And they already have the money, it's just that they're asking us to let them spend it.
It sounds a bit.
It's a little different than what we said, let them spend it. We were thinking about classroom educational purposes and not paying salaries and not paying for, I guess, certain other things. But, I'm just, that request, and I, all I'm doing is just presenting, it'll be a group decision. But Dave, I'm just gonna try to give you some ideas.
Well, it sounds like if we were gonna do something, we'd have to change what we already did. Because the way we go to before, like she said, was to not spend it with just the certain things. And one of them there, they're coming for certain things and one of them now. And of course, I'm for both of them, but, but I think it's a good thing.
Do y'all, do y'all want to just, I guess that's we can ask to rent this permission, I believe we'll probably make a vote on Monday night. Can we bring it to the above Monday nights, whether we allow it or don't allow it?
You can vote on our schools too?
Both, both matters.
Would we, would we? It would have to. We'd have to question, we'd have to change, which probably already been done, we did that.
I don't, I mean, all I know is what the ordinance says.
I said we'd have to change the ordinance to do it.
Well, or Scott would have to draft something saying that we were doing something, I don't know, that's a Scott Hunt question.
Yeah, I think you need to.
And Scott Hunt may say that, you know, the playground equipment is considered educational and, you know, it may, I, I don't, you know.
Physical education is a course.
Yeah, but you know, in high school, it says it can't be used for any athletics, so, you know, you're starting to get a, you know.
Phys ed is different than extracurricular activity though.
Well, we, we'll address both of them Monday night and decide if we're gonna allow either or, or neither. And that'd be, that's what we can ask for.
And we may need to wait, because Scott may not have time to get all this, we may need to wait till the second meeting and that way Scott can.
Tell the shot.
Yeah. Scott will have time to go over the ordinance, he'll have time to read the request from both places and, and let him decide. So it may be the, the second meeting might be the best choice.
And that's the meeting when we're voting on our public hearings on street closings, is that right?
The second meeting.
And, oh, I also have a business that has applied for a liquor license and that will be on that agenda as well, their public hearing.
Okay.
And I know we're already over, but just real quick, on the, the street lights from Alabama Power. The way I understand what we discussed before, the, if we go with the option two, where we just go with two different lights, the, the largest number of lights, the two hundred and, no, let's see, it's five hundred and forty-five lights are gonna be equivalent to the light that is right at the parking lot going into the stadium there behind the high school. I've talked with Alabama Power and I've been around and looked at all their lights, so if we change, it will be an LED light that is equivalent to that light. If y'all wanna drive by in the dark and look at it, and that would be five hundred and forty-five lights like that. Now, there will be sixty-nine lights that will be changed, that will be equivalent to the street light that is right in front of Shopper's Value. If you're going north, it'll be Shopper's Value, you count that light, it'll be that light, and the next four on the right hand side of the road, if you're going north. And we would have sixty-nine lights that would be changed to an LED equivalent of those lights. My, and y'all need to look at these at night, so you'll have an idea of what, what they're proposing. My question is, if we change, where do we know where those sixty-nine lights are gonna be? Because they're scattered out and that's something that, that I just don't understand. We're gonna have a, you know, two different lights, but if we've got four of them there and then the rest of them are gonna be different, would it not make more sense for them, all, all sixty-nine of them? What's the rationale in having them spread out and skipped around?
I imagine we've had, we've probably accommodated somebody's request for better lighting.
But when we change, where will these sixty-nine be? Are they gonna, you know, he said it would be a head for head change, so are we gonna have four of the sixty-nine there and then the ones on the other side of the street are gonna be the different wattage? I don't understand how the change is gonna occur, but y'all need to go look at those lights, so you'll have an idea of, of what the equivalent, of the LED equivalent of what they propose.
Well, he.
And the only one that I could find to represent the five hundred and forty-five is gonna be that light right there as you turn into the parking lot at the stadium.
Well, he, he could come back and tell, let, tell us what, where they're going. That one person.
They can't tell you where the lights are right now for a head to head change, I had to get up and go find them.
Get back.
I had to walk down the street and look for the lights. So, so that's my question, if it's a head for head change, is, you know, are we still gonna be skipped around? Or are they gonna propose, you know, this, these sixty-nine are gonna go in this area and then the rest of them will fill in? I don't understand that part.
I would, I would say that, that they would be mixed, intermixed based on the proposal. We might can get it fixed to where the.
And I mean, that may be the best thing, I just, when y'all go through town at night, just look at the difference in the lights and the difference in the, in the colors and, and the, the way they're, they're shining.
Did you understand what kind of, where those other lights are leaving, odd sized lights?
No, I never could figure it out. I didn't know, I thought, well, maybe they, they know more about the lighting.
I guess that would be, I, I think that's pertinent question and I think probably we ought to have one more sit to with them before we decide.
And, and I mean, sometime y'all, just when you're in town at night, look, because those four, if you start a cash saver, I know those four will be the, the equivalent. These are the non-LED equivalent to what they're wanting to, to change sixty-nine of them too.
One other thing y'all get with you, this Gonzales Strength and Associates have, have analyzed the extra costs that would be involved if they handled seventeen sidewalk project. And so, that would be information that would have us, I guess, decide, we'd have questions as to whether please not be involved. So take that with you and we'll talk about that as soon as possible.
And I did talk with the bus station, the bus shop, and there is bus transportation to the recreation center. So there is not now, because the recreation center is closed, but the whole recreation center is up and functioning. There is bus transportation to the recreation center. So there's no.
We don't really need that.
I mean, saying you've got a law, it's an excuse, because I verified today that there is bus transportation to the recreation center.
Kids just wanna get on the bus.
Well, and that, and that comes back to the parents, I mean, the parents have to take the responsibility to say, if you're going to the recreation center, you've got to get on the bus and, and go.
Okay, well, thank y'all for being here today, I appreciate that all the good work we got done, this was very productive today.